If everybody could find a seat, we're gonna get started here. If you would, just stand and have prayer. I'm gonna ask Alderman Betts to say her prayer and after we're gonna follow with the pledge allegiance.
Let's pray. Again, Father, we are thankful for the day that you have blessed us all with. We're grateful for your love to us and for the way that you have protected us and provided for us. Lord, help us to always remember that you watch over us and that you always have our best interests at your heart. And may we trust you more each day. Ask you, Lord, do you help us to be mindful of those in our community who are suffering, those who are grieving? Help us, Lord, to be a hand as we can. Now, Lord, as we meet tonight, I pray, Lord, that you help us to make wise decisions. And we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I need the record to reflect that we did that backwards.
We did do that backwards.
Okay. Like welcome everybody here this evening. We have a couple of guests with us and I would like, number one, Mr. Glenn Womack, who is here, who is running for senate. You know, anytime somebody requests to be recognized, I always give them an opportunity to stand and introduce themselves, anything they would like to say. So Glenn, at this time, if you'd like to stand and introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mayor, Council for allowing me to talk to you, given the disposition as well as guests. I don't feel like a stranger here this evening. I'm Glenn Womack from Harrisburg, running for state senate. I'm president of Womack Construction Group over the last several years. We built several projects here in the town of Vidalia. So that's the reason I don't feel like a stranger. But I was approached about running for senate in the representative and senate here three or four years ago. But as most of you know, my children come into business and started that and working with me. And now I feel like they've got control and where they can run that business and give me the opportunity to serve and disposition as senate. We very familiar over the years, the last 30 years, I started that business about 35 years ago. But we started working with municipalities, rural water system, rural district. Over the years, we've built another company, a management company, that we manage some rural utilities as well as towns. So we managed to create about 175 jobs today through that. But we've learned a lot about infrastructure needs, municipalities, the capital outlay, stuff that really relates to all of us here tonight in trying to get projects in our area built and funded and as well as working with the mandates and the regulations to get some of that done, all the way from EPA to DEQ to just some of the codes and standards that we have to go through. So I feel like I'm the business candidate for the senate position. It's turned out by Neil Reiser, which has done a great job. But I feel like I'm the business candidate for District 32 senate. So with that being said, I've asked for from this area to support me as a business candidate. Thank you all.
Thank you, Glenn. Thank you very much. We appreciate you. Also, before we get started, Heather, if you want to introduce a guest, we'll clean it. Would you like to introduce?
Sure. This is Larkin Simpson with Central Louisiana Economic Development Alliance. She is the vice president of major employers and represents Concordia Parish in the Central Louisiana region.
Sure. Everybody knows them. Go ahead.
Paul John, COO of Cyra Technologies. Ed John Swanson, the plant manager and for Cyra Technologies.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Also, before we get started, I see the beautification committee is out in force tonight. And I think Sabrina wants to make an announcement about our upcoming Fourth of July celebration.
Yes, we are having the Third Annual Fourth of July Celebration on the riverfront on July the 4th. We will have entertainment as we had last year, vendors. Of course, we will have the fireworks show. I see a lot of the sponsors here in the room tonight. The festival this year is from 3:00 to dark. Last year, we had an all-day festival and I think all the ladies and gentlemen who helped said no to that this year. It's very hot. But we have jumpy houses this year, we have snowballs, we have a lot of things to help keep everybody cool. We'll have misting tents and we're just gonna have a great time. I think Alderman Gardner is gonna bless us with song this year. We tried to get the mayor to sing the National Anthem to kick us off and he said, "No, no, no." So maybe he'll come up and be there when we kick it off. But we invite everybody to come out. It's a great time. Community comes together from both sides of the river. So we invite everybody to attend.
As long as it's not too hot, the mayor might be able to make it.
Don't even go. But anyway, let's move on.
We walked 3.8 miles. He quit right at the end and I beat him into the national cemetery.
There were two misinformation there, but we were regressing here. I was the first through the gates, folks. Anyway, let's move on. Let's have roll call. Clerk, can we have roll call?
In the town of Vidalia, Board of Alderman, roll call for regular meeting of the mayor and Board of Alderman dated July 11th, June 11th, 2019. Alderman Betts.
Present.
Alderman Doray.
Present.
Alderman Gardner.
Here.
Alderman McCoy.
The winner is here.
Alderman Probst.
Present.
Mayor, let's register for him, for his present.
Okay. All right. First thing we need to do is approve our minutes from our previous meeting. We have that before. Is there any questions on that?
I say move.
Move to accept. Is Alderman Doray here second? Second by Alderman McCoy. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Debra, would you, our CPA, Ms. Deborah Mowley, if you will review our financial statement for April 2019?
Okay. Financials for tonight's meeting have been distributed to the Alderman and to the department heads. They include the balance sheet as of April 30th, and the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the 10 months ending April 30th, a budget to actual comparison by fund, and a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. The balance sheet is the statement of assets, liabilities, and fund balance at a particular point in time. The combined balance sheet for all funds indicates that our cash is at 2.5 million, investments are at 3.8 million, total assets are at 33.3 million, total liabilities are 5.9 million, and the fund balance is at 27.4 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the 10 months ending April 30th is a statement of total revenues, expenses, capital outlay, and other financing sources and uses over a period of time. The statement indicates that the combined revenues are 35.5 million, total expenditures are 31 million, and the change in net position is 4.4 million. The town should have approximately 17% remaining in the projected expenses. Overall, we're at the 21% remaining balance level in expenditures and 17% in revenues through June 30th. If all the expenses and revenues are received in expense at the end of the fiscal year, the projection would be a decrease in net position of 254,000 over budget. The town is in good financial position. The budget indicates a $3 million change in net position and currently we are at 4.4 million. All payables are current and the bank balances are beginning to build up. As you know, the town's current financial position is being carefully monitored and in the event expenditures and other uses and projected expenditures exceed the total budget expenditures and other uses by 5% or more, the mayor is to advise the board. This applies to revenue and other sources and fund balances. And a budget analysis presented to assist with that 5% calculation. It was determined that the 2018-19 budget should be amended in order to recognize the possibility, or highly likely possibility, that the hydro royalty power costs will exceed 5% of the budget amount. In addition, that will create a higher revenue amount too, as well as transfers will increase. So the expected overall adjustment is a positive $623,000 change. And a letter notifying the council member has been sent in accordance with the Local Government Budget Act. So that concludes my report.
Any questions? Now, I would like to clarify what she's saying and the reason why we have the amendment on here. Yes, the state law, if your revenues or expenses are gonna be out over 5%, you do have to notify the Alderman. And we've sent that letter. But that's a good thing because what's causing that is with the High River, the hydroelectric plant is really generating a lot more income. So our income is overshooting what we originally projected. So we've got to note that. But also, the 6% that we pay the hydro of that we're required to buy is also much. So that's kind of putting our expenses at that break even, almost that 5%. So we're just doing that and we're amending it strictly so we'll be compliant with state law and it won't be a finding on our audit. So, Debra, thank you. She keeps a close look on that, but that's good and it's a good thing to have. And that's one of the reasons why we're going to amend this budget. Might not really be necessary, but that final at month hasn't finished up June yet with what they're generating down there. But it's a good thing for the day, I promise you. Any other questions? Any council member have a question to Debra? Thank you, Debra. Okay. Occupational license applications. We have a new business in town. I see the landlord here, Mr. Steve Weeks. We have Ms. Stephanie Farmer, which is, the trade name is Poshen Company LLC. Is Stephanie here? She's not here? Okay. She is a, basically it's a salon for hair, manicures, and pedicures. And that's the old Pizza Hut building, as everybody knows it by. So is there any questions on this? If not, I have a motion to accept.
I make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Doray. Is he here second? Second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor? Okay. Second, we have her sign approval. You'll see a picture of it. Is there any questions on this? And can I entertain a motion to accept that?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Jay, did we have to amend an application from last week? Did I see that in the?
Well, that was her. First, her she changed her trade name, as Womack did, from S&amp;J to Poshen Company.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, Mayor.
That's okay. Can I hear a motion for the acceptance of the sign? Motion by Alderman Probst. Is he here second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Okay.
That was John Betts on the second, Council.
I had you down.
It don't matter.
Okay.
I got Betts now.
All right. Moving to the next one. We have a Vital Nutrition LLC. Are they here tonight? Vital Nutrition? I think this is the, they having a meal replacement shakes and teas for health. I've heard good things about them. I mean, it's exciting for us to have that, a meal replacement. I certainly need something like that.
I think Ms. Cassandra loves them. You win already, didn't you?
I guess so, love it.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept this?
I make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Doray. Is he here second?
I second.
Second made by Alderman McCoy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Maybe that helps the mayor next year when we. And I don't mention that too much.
All right. Moving on to item number four, on the Mississippi River update, I would like to say that there's good news. Of course, it's with a hint of caution with it. Yesterday, I sat in on a meeting with MRCTI and we also had the National Weather Service Corps of Engineers and also the Climate Prediction Service on the phone, on joint call. We had mayors, over 50 mayors up and down the Mississippi River. And they gave us basically a forecast and it's basically, it's better than what we could have expected than what we got two weeks ago. And what they're saying is most of the northern tributaries are already past their crest. They've already met it and they're starting down. We've had a 9, I mean, a 1,000-year flood event, I mean, rain event, which caused a 500-year flood event. Does that make sense? About a 1,000-year rain event in Arkansas that made us have a 500-year flood event all along the Mississippi River. And the frequency and intensity of the future rainfall is the only thing that we have unknown at this time, other than we have a lot of saturated soil conditions. And they said, "The only thing right now, pray for no tropical storms or no kind of big system that's gonna dump a lot of rain around Missouri area." Mr. Brad Pugh, who with the Climate Prediction Service is predicting an above-normal average rainfall far mid to lower Mississippi Valley, which that's causing them concern right now. But he said that is what the forecast is for. Also, that the, for the summer prediction for July, August, and September is that Missouri and that area will have some very periodic heavy rainfall, but north and south of that, not so much. That's gonna be about a normal summer and that they think that we're gonna be fine. The Corps of Engineers reported on Morgans and why they did not go ahead and pull the trigger on doing that. There are triggers at the Red River Landing and the structure itself, which, when they hit those triggers, they will open it. And those triggers were not hit. So and plus, the forecasts are now lower, so they're not gonna open the Morgans at this time. Bonnie Carey's still open. And again, with this flood, it's historic in nature and we've been at 156 days above flood stage. And one thing to note is the floods we had in 2008 and 2011, just this one flood event we have has carried more water than those two flood events combined this year. So that's pretty significant. The other thing I will tell you is a place that you can go and get the same information we're getting, if you'll go to the National Weather Service and pull up their Mississippi River forecast or if you just key that in on the internet and pull it up, there's a 28-day forecast on there. And you can go down there and Natchez is in the second group of columns and it'll have a 28-day forecast based on what our level will be, plus all the others that you'll see up and down the Mississippi River stem. And at one time, our forecast was to be over 58 feet for a period of 12 days. I'm glad to say that now it's down to just 58 feet for two days. And that's gonna be on the 15th to 16th of this month and then it's gonna be a very slow fall from there. I figure when we get close to the end of the month, we'll be able to go ahead and clean up the other side of the Riverwalk, that area that's grown up. We haven't done anything there yet, even though we could probably get over there with weed eaters and a lot of debris in that area. We wanna do it at one time when we get, you know, get the water down just a little bit more. We're gonna clean that up, remove those sandbags, clean up those areas around our park benches and things, and then also get the splash pad reopened for our kids to enjoy this summer. Because right now, we can't open it because Mark will tell you that over by the restrooms, there's those controls are in the ground. And right now, with the moisture and all from the seepage, you know, it just would damage those controls and cost us a lot of money to fix those. So that's where we're at on that. And also, one other thing I will tell you that we're gonna leave the Hesco baskets around our water well permanently right now until we fix that and have a permanent resolution for that because it cost us $30,000 to $50,000 when you have to wrap that thing. And I just don't see us spending the money where we're gonna have this every year. Why throw that money away? We're gonna leave those Hesco baskets there. I know they're not sore, but until we can fix that permanently, we're gonna leave them like they are. Also, Bobby Paul is our IT, has been working very hard to come up and has an initiative. We're working on emergency procedures to make a policy and procedure for emergency procedures for our town and all of our departments. So any questions on the Mississippi River? Any questions from council? Okay. That's my update. Item number five is just an introduction of and/or amending the operating budget of revenues and expenses for the town of Vidalia, Louisiana, and for the fiscal year 2018-19. That's just an introduction. There's no action being required. Item number six on the agenda is board adoption of a resolution amending a resolution approving Cyra Technologies LLC for participation in the industrial tax exemption program at 2001 DA Big Lane Road, Vidalia, Louisiana. Heather, would you like to address the crowd and the council on that?
So back in April 2018, Cyra Technologies, under the project name of Pencil, we did outline that it was Cyra that was looking. They were looking at locations throughout the state of Louisiana and paying to see what the support of the local governing entities would be for ITAP. And the council did approve the ITAP resolution for them at that time. Since then, they did make their decision to locate in Vidalia at the former Louisiana Alaskan plant. And they have been investing money, hiring people, and really doing a good job of developing their project out at the industrial park. Since we submitted the ITAP resolutions from the local governing entities to the state, the state in building their contract for the ITAP program stated that they define a job as someone who is domiciled in the state of Louisiana. Well, that presents a problem for our area and other border parishes throughout Louisiana. As you know, we are part of the Natchez MSA. We are part of the Natchez-Adams County Labor Shed, Lake Paul area. Most, all of our businesses on both sides of the river employ residents on the opposite sides of the river. It is just who we are and how we grow and develop. I don't feel like we should penalize the company for our geography. They located here knowing that we were a border community and not realizing that that could penalize them for their hiring process. We went to the state to see if we could receive an exception. They said that they would put whatever the local governing entities wanted in that contract. So we had to come back to our local governing bodies and bring forth the resolution that we already passed and amended to reflect the ability to allow foreign non-Louisiana residents to be employed at the facility. During those talks with the state, we thought a 50-50 share would be, you know, something that would be positive. The company said that they would be comfortable with committing to 60% of their workforce being Louisiana residents. So therefore, in the resolution that's in your packet, we are committing to 25 total jobs at the plant, which is what we presented back in April, 25 jobs. They're committing to that still. And then recognizing that 15 of those jobs must be Louisiana residents or they'll be penalized. And then we kept the payroll number in there. The payroll figure is the same and it states that it's a total payroll, you know, total annual payroll for permanent jobs. And then the state shared with us what their default penalty is, should, or threshold for a penalty would be, should they not comply. So they allow for a 90% threshold. So if they meet 90% of the goals, then they can continue to receive the incentive. If they fall under 90%, then they will be penalized for the incentive. So that's what the resolution amendments reflect. Because of the exceptions that we're making, we did add to the, what I call the whereas section of the resolution, outlining why we're making these, you know, exceptions, that we are a border parish to another state, specifically Mississippi, and that we are part of the Natchez MSA and that we have a regional workforce. So the state could see that there's a reason for making these changes in the resolution. So tonight, the company and on their behalf, I'm asking that the council approve these provisions so they can continue to go before the state board of commerce and industry to receive approval of their contract.
What did the other boards vote?
So last night, the police jury was the first board that we went to because they were the first meeting of the month. And they decided to table it. They felt like this was a Vidalia project and they wanted the town council to take the lead on this and that they are scheduling a special evening later this week or early next week to, you know, have their decision based on what the council is.
And we have a time, this doesn't actually begin, this abatement doesn't actually begin until January 1 of 2020. Is that correct? That's year one?
Correct.
The issue that I have with it is that would give a prospective employee plenty of time to relocate to Louisiana. You know, they have until 12/31 of 19 to relocate to the state of Louisiana. What happens when we grant these tax abatements is the state of Louisiana, the parishes, the school boards, and the town itself misses out on revenue. And one way to recoup the revenue that is lost is by requiring that the jobs are held by Louisiana residents. That way, we get some of our money back to go back into our school systems, our city, and our parish. The 25 job creation is a fantastic thing. I find it difficult to believe that we can't find 25 qualified individuals anywhere in the state of Louisiana to work at this company or who would be willing to relocate to such a wonderful town as Vidalia in order to work at this company that's providing, from what I hear, great pay scale, great benefits. You know, it's a great place to work and a great place to live. I am against adding that 10-job caveat to include Mississippi simply because the agreement for abatement would affect not only the town, again, it affects the parish in a whole, and the school board. So the decision that the town of Vidalia makes tonight will affect everybody living in Concordia Parish. We want the jobs here. We're glad they came here. We gave them everything they asked for upfront. And we just ask, kinda as Alderman Betts said in a previous meeting, we just ask that they keep their word, just like we've kept ours.
And so when I came before the board in April of 2018, I did not stand before you and say, "They're committing to 25 Louisiana jobs." I said, "They're committing to 25 jobs." We all know that the workforce crosses the bridge. We've all had jobs in Mississippi. We've all had, Mississippi residents have jobs in Louisiana. That's our way of life. It's our reality. This is gonna be an issue for any company that we recruit to the area or locate here. It puts us at a competitive disadvantage if we're not willing to work with them. So I feel like that we did present to each board that we are creating 25 jobs with this company. They are still committing to create 25 jobs. However, the Louisiana caveat is gonna be tough for our area regardless. And, you know, they can indeed hire from someone living in Lafayette or Lake Charles, but that paycheck's gonna go back to Lafayette and Lake Charles. If a worker is hired from Adams County, they're more than likely willing to spend their money. Whenever they're here, they're gonna do our homework and they use our services that we have to offer. They're more than likely to spend those funds in our area.
When you presented it though, as, you know, that tax abatement, it was understood, I understood it, that to qualify for that tax abatement under John Bell Edwards Law from 2017, that it was a Louisiana tax abatement and that the jobs created had to be Louisiana jobs. So you didn't put it in the paperwork, but it was an understood factor that in order to qualify, which is why you're bringing it back to us now, is because they came back and said, "You have to have, it has to say they're Louisiana jobs unless the local authority grants you an exception to that." Is that correct?
Right.
So, that's right. So you didn't present it as Louisiana jobs and it wasn't worded that way. But I knew they had to be Louisiana jobs in order to qualify for that Louisiana tax abatement program. So it was kinda presented as Louisiana jobs. You know, so you're asking us to change it from the 25 Louisiana jobs to 15 Louisiana jobs and 10 others. And what I'm asking is that we hold true to what we originally approved, which was providing 25 jobs for our local residents. The town of Vidalia is expensing money in order to make the business, to extend the gas line, you know, possible upgrades on several things out there. We're in good faith extending the money so that we can make sure that this is a successful business. All I ask is that they hold true to what we originally agreed to grant them.
And I do believe that, you know, we made a commitment of 25 jobs at that plant. They made a commitment to invest $25 million at that site and create 25 jobs. They're upholding their end of their commitment and I feel like we need to uphold our end of our commitment.
I think we're upholding our end of the agreement because we've got a lot of houses to sell, Heather, in Vidalia. And if somebody's really interested in a job, just like any other job, if they're in Lafayette, I'm not gonna say it's going back to Lafayette because they can move to Vidalia, Louisiana with a lot of vacant houses. And we can fill one of those houses, it can help us pay for our utilities that we're losing resident after resident after resident after resident because they're moving. Correct? Yes, we're losing residents. So we need some residents. So let's make them move to Vidalia to get that job.
And we're losing residents because of the lack of industry.
Well, and that's right. We got one. We got one that's willing to hire. And again, I don't see it going back to Lafayette if they're willing to move here, unless they really wanna spend a lot of money by driving and commuting. You know, so that's up to them, you know, what they do. That's not my choice. That's their choice as to what they wanna do. So I say we need to stick to what we got, 25 jobs, Louisiana jobs, income in Louisiana. And just like the street, we couldn't talk about that. We had to go with what the company said. The street needed to be named that street, correct? No questions asked. We have to uphold our end of the deal according to Alderman Betts. So let's hold our end of the deal. And the deal is mine. We need residents in Vidalia and they need to come to Vidalia if they want their job.
Is there a threat to pull the company if this is not, you're saying, you know, we're trying to create jobs, people are leaving because we don't have jobs. Is there a threat to pull the project and the company if this is not agreed to? Is there a threat to pull the project and the company if this is not agreed to?
Maybe they've invested significant dollars into that site. I doubt they're going to pull out, but there could be, I mean, it puts them at a disadvantage.
Can I offer some comments? Could it please the mayor and the board? A couple of things. First, the attraction to the area was very much the presentation essentially of a dual city base metropolitan area that we could draw from for employment. So we are actually introduced to this area and opportunity by LED. And specifically, when we were looking for, okay, what would be the areas we could draw from employment, what would that geography look like? The data that they provided to us fully took advantage of those combined geographies. At no point in that conversation was it mentioned to us that, by the way, if you hire from the Mississippi side of the river versus the Louisiana side of the river, that's going to put a potential business incentive at jeopardy. So in terms of, you know, what was the company's understanding at that point in time, that was the way that we had been coached to look at it by LED themselves. Essentially, that you can take advantage of two metropolitan areas, two ports, and I'll be frank, that was without a doubt an advantage for us in considering this location. The second thing I would want to highlight, and this is just based on interviewing candidates who've expressed an interest in the various roles that we have, our company has a very fundamental policy and probably the strongest I've seen in any of the firms I've worked with over my four-year career, and that is to be equal opportunity in all respects. And I know that there are individuals with deep roots on, you know, one side of the river or the other. It's not my place to question why they're there or why they're maybe in the center for them to remain there. Our interest is in making sure that we're really hiring the best people we can for each of these roles. The reason that is so critical is we cannot forget that this is ultimately competing vigorously with entrenched existing competition across the ocean in China. So anything, whether it's a loss of a tax exemption or it's not getting the right candidate for the role, potentially impacts our ability to be as competitive as possible. And what I would suggest is the best thing for Vidalia is that we have that freedom to really get the right people in the right role and that we are able to take advantage of an economic incentive that was presented at the beginning as something that is level people off a dual geography. So that's the history of how we got to here. That's our experience to date in talking with individuals or candidates for roles. And I would submit that we are earnestly holding up our end of the bargain. We've already put 22 and a half million into the facility. Over there, anyone who's had a chance to see it, I think we can see that. And we're looking for a foundation that allows us to compete effectively with that overseas competition and to continue to grow and prosper and we all benefit from that. So I thought I would just share that back from a perspective. I certainly understand where you're coming from on your points, but I want to be sure you have the benefit of that historical context because I personally would.
Thank you, Paul. I'd like to make some comments at this point because I've said it before. This area has, Vidalia, Concordia Parish grew because of Natchez Industry. IP, Armstrong, Johns Manville, Diamond International, all these, the men who lived in Vidalia, Ridgecrest, Ferry, had jobs in Natchez, Mississippi. I'm sure there's plenty in here. My dad was one of them. Drove every day across that bridge going IP for 40-something years, supported our family lived in Vidalia. And this company's coming in here and making this investment chose Vidalia. And we worked very hard with them to, and to get them there and they have not asked us for anything other than what they can get in any other town, which is the ITIP. Because they're competing for these jobs, other communities are. Regardless of what you want to hear or believe out there about why they're here and didn't go elsewhere, there's, I promise you, we're blessed to have them here. And I think, no, I know that this is a springboard that's going to come far because guess what's coming behind this? Derek's here with us. Denim's coming, 300 jobs. We're going to get 300 men and women from Vidalia, Louisiana, or maybe Concordia Parish? I don't think not because we're going to be having the same discussion. Because these jobs are real, they're coming here, and I think for us to do this, well, not only just take care of them, but also what's coming with our Vidalia denim. So right now, we can make a stand because, and show them and these companies that, yes, there will be some jobs from maybe Adams County. We don't know that for sure, but we want to have that ability to do that, to reach over there and do that because those people are going to be living here and spending money because every morning, there's Louisiana tags going to Mississippi to work and there's Mississippi tags coming to Louisiana to work everywhere over here. There's Mississippi people coming over here doing their shopping. There's Mississippi people coming here, whatever they doing, buying Lotto tickets, getting cheaper gas. There is all, we're reaching here and for us not to recognize that and try to build a fence and, you know, basically, like he just made a good point, to compete globally. He wants to make sure he has the best 25 people he can get. I hope they're in Vidalia and they might be, but if they're not and he's got that person who's got a special talent or special something he reveals right across within two miles of that plant, I'd hate to see them not be able to get that and plus have the benefits. And on another note, they do have a tax exemption, but they're also paying taxes right now. They're being a partner in the community. They're paying taxes right now on a building that they've got that's already on our tax rolls. They're paying taxes on there. They're paying sales taxes on the equipment that they're installing and buying. They're making donations to festivals, to things all over. I mean, they are being a partner in this community and I think we're blessed to have them and we should show support to them. All these governmental agencies ought to do that. Now that's how I feel because this is going to be a springboard for our company. Some of you might, and I've, 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 some of, I've had some people tell me they're against the ITIP program. Well, let me tell you, give you a reality. If you don't have the ITIP program for these industries trying to find a home, you're not going to get them. Okay? You're not going to get them if you don't do this because other communities are out there competing for these. And if you don't do these, for these companies, you're not going to get them, I'm sorry. And we're just going to die on the vine and we're going to have the same old problems that we've always had. There's too much positive stuff going on in our town. And Tommy, I disagree. A lot of people are leaving. Yes, some people are leaving, but I went around here just a month or two ago and counted houses. There's less than 1% at that time of houses were for sale in Vidalia, Louisiana. And I, by district, I went and I counted for sale signs in the yard and that might be more than that. But I disagree with people who are leaving Vidalia, Louisiana because they're leaving probably because there's no jobs. That would be the reason. And we're trying to, we're reversing that trend and I think we've done a good job of working with these companies, getting them here. And that's how I feel about it. And businesses are doing good. Our sales tax is increasing. You know, I see nothing but positive and I think for us to throw any negative into this is, that's disappointing.
I don't think anybody, I know that I personally didn't go right there.
I'd like to say something first because let's put it in perspective. Mayor Craft, let's put it in perspective. Natchez Adams School District comes to Vidalia. No, they don't come to Vidalia unless they live in Vidalia. They buy a house in Vidalia. But Delta Charter opened up and caused us a massive amount of mess because our town went shoo, when they could go out and buy a lot out there, as Aritha told me, and go to Delta Charter. So here we go. What did they do? They came and rented houses. They came and bought houses. They came and did what they had to do to put their kids in school. Let's put that in first because that's what we're asking them to do. Okay? That's number one. If we've got a 3,900 population, they're going somewhere. So yes, they are leaving, whether you agree or not, they are leaving. The other thing is, as far as the location of the person that comes to Vidalia, everybody moves in this world is the way it is these days. We relocate. We go somewhere else. We get a job. That's how our world functions today. It's not that way as it used to be. You know, the fact that I can stay in this one location, be happy the rest of my life. But the schools are what really showed us that we didn't have anything but education to offer because we went, the houses came vacant. They didn't buy them. They didn't sell them. They didn't back forth, back forth, back forth. So I'm just saying, what have we got to offer? We've got a school system. What have we got to offer? We've got plenty of houses that are available for people to move in and be able to locate in Vidalia and help us pay for our utilities so we can lower our utility rates, okay?
And that's, and that's another one, lady, you said that because this company's going to help us do that for the rest of our residents.
We need some help.
So, and again, I appreciate that and that's, I think that's your opinion of that.
I got an opinion.
I know.
Just like you got one.
I know. Okay.
So I don't think there was, I'm going to say something because you kind of looked over at me when you said the festival. Syrah has donated to the fireworks both years that I have handled the fireworks. I have thanked them profusely. I have the ability to separate the work that I do for the town of Vidalia and the work that I do for donations and sponsorships through various organizations that I'm a part of. In no way does any statement that I make up here reflect the relationship that I have with Mr. John or anybody else at Syrah. In no way does it reflect that. They have always been supportive of everything that goes on in the town. The mayor is correct. They do pay taxes. They pay the capital taxes on the property that they purchase. The abatement is for the capital improvements, right? So they're paying utilities. They are contributing, Syrah itself is contributing to the money in Concordia Parish and the town of Vidalia. I was elected by the people of Vidalia. My first responsibility is to the people of Vidalia. So when I say I want the jobs to come from Louisiana because I want the people who are in Natchez to drive to Vidalia to, I want the people who live in Natchez driving to Syrah to relocate to Vidalia is because my initial responsibility is to the town of Vidalia itself. It is not to the region of Natchez or Adams County. It is not to Natchez Inc. or any other organization that is helping to bring these businesses in. I am an employee of the town of Vidalia, elected by the people. So my very first statement is let's require them to move to Vidalia because Vidalia pays the paycheck of a lot of people in this room. We're talking 10 jobs. We're talking about IP. We were talking hundreds of jobs. Of course, there was a percentage that was going to have to come from outside of the Vidalia area. With denim, the same thing is going to apply because of the sheer number of jobs. We're talking 25 jobs. And I'll say it again, I find it difficult to believe that you can't find 25 good candidates who currently live in Louisiana or who are willing to relocate to Louisiana based on the high quality of job that you're offering. That is where the statement comes from. It is not because I disagree with Syrah or think you have a bad business model or that I don't think that you should be here. I welcome you here. I reach out to you when I need something and you have never failed to return a call, an email, or even stop by. The statements that I'm making have in no way any bearing on the relationship that I have with you as a man. I am speaking about the agreement to hire and to provide 25 jobs for the state of Louisiana. And I believe that as representatives of the town of Vidalia, we owe that to our town to continue to require that all 25 jobs come from at least Louisiana.
I, I was going to kind of stay out of this because I thought it was easy. You mind me putting you on the spot?
No, not.
Okay. Historically, and we're talking about Fruit of the Loom. What was your workforce like from Vidalia? How many, how many employees first?
Most of them came from Louisiana, A P, the Concordia Parish, Vidalia, Verdas, because initially they hired that way because of Louisiana. But as business dictated by being in Natchez, you couldn't come to staff. Or we may have people here, but they didn't qualify or they couldn't meet the standards to get hired to have a job. Therefore, you had to branch out into Natchez. So I say when I had 300 employees, 200 of my workers, Louisiana, the other 100 of my came from Adams County. From anywhere in Mississippi.
Okay. And anywhere in Mississippi includes Fayette?
Exactly.
Okay. And Louisiana included as far as Wisner. You had people coming from as far as Wisner?
Monroe.
Monroe to work here. And with the business just starting up, that initial 25 people won't be the 25 people that we'll be talking about next year because there's going to be some turnover, there's going to be. And how big of a pool do we really have to select from in Vidalia? Now, I'm Vidalia-born, I'm, I'm here. I'm the homie. I've been here forever. But at the same time, let's be reasonable now. If it was good enough the first time that we said we're willing to do the tax abatement or however that was and they ran from board to board to board and everybody was good with it, and now it's back to us, now, we're going to lead the parish now. We're going to lead for the school board. And how long before you're going to be open? Tentatively?
In terms of what we are, full production.
And you got 10, you got, you got at least 10 people down there now?
Yeah, that's correct. Full production in August.
Okay, full production in August? You said in August?
Yes.
Okay. See, that's, that's what we need. We need, we need those lights on. We need y'all running. We need business. I've been in several meetings that we even talked about the shutdown, that at some point you may have to shut down. And we need to know based on data, well, everything that we get from this point on is going to be data, that's going to be historical data next time we have this conversation. I don't think we should stop this train when we agreed earlier that we were going to move forward with this, with this company.
Oh, I don't think we should either. I don't think that we should pull the, the tax abatement. I just think that originally when it was presented, whether or not it was written into the resolution as it was required to be, that they were Louisiana jobs. It was an understanding that they be Louisiana jobs in order to qualify for that tax abatement program granted by the state. All of the other entities approved the abatement based on that same information. In order to qualify for this Louisiana tax abatement program, they're Louisiana jobs. I say let's give them the abatement just exactly as we gave them before. Don't, don't change that, but maintain the requirement that the jobs are 25 jobs. You're giving Fruit of the Loom as an example. My brother worked there. Fruit of the Loom helped my brother get his first start. I think a lot of us have family members who worked or started at Fruit of the Loom. You said 300 jobs and 200 of them started in Louisiana. Yeah, they weren't from Vidalia, but they were in Louisiana. We're talking 25 jobs. That's the differential there. When you have a pool of 300 people, absolutely you're going to have to pull some people from Mississippi. If y'all get to the point of 300 people, absolutely you're going to have to pull some people from Mississippi. We're talking 25 jobs. So in order to proceed...
Preference for the next company, but not this one. Don't give them, I understand, I understand your relationship, but you're going to give preference to this company because they got 300 jobs. You're not going to give the same treatment to this company just because it's not 300 jobs, which could maybe wind up being more than...
Absolutely. And the abatement requirement is only 25 of those jobs.
Then you move on to something else. College education, out-of-state tuition, never was changed. We're a modern state. Never do we ever get a break in out-of-state tuition. I went to school in Mississippi. I paid out-of-state tuition. I had to do that. Robert, you going to school in Mississippi?
They've changed that rule. If you live locally here in the...
They finally did, but not when I was going to school.
But we're talking in this, this age.
We can do that. We can do that.
They've changed that rule.
John, would you like? Everybody spoke, John and Rob.
Man of his word.
I appreciate the, a couple of the Alderman's remembrance of my vote previously in my statements. I haven't forgot them.
Just thought we'd remind you, you know.
Well, you know, my memory's not short.
I didn't think it would.
But this company is very good for Concordia Parish and Vidalia. And it is, and you can say what you want. 25 is a small number, but that's, that's not the point. The point is that they're looking for qualified people. And if you're going to, they do have 60% of it that is Louisiana jobs. And I understand your points, I understand what you're saying, but still, I think this company needs the flexibility. I hope that all 25 jobs come from Louisiana.
You have the power to make it so.
There's a possibility.
You have the power to make it so.
There is a possibility that they will. But they also know because of the way the jobs are and the qualifications for the job, the possibility of that happening may not happen. So, they need some flexibility. That's all that we're asking, they are asking is for a little flexibility. Okay? Now, I understand what you're saying about the original contracts and all that. I understand that. But I don't think you can make the same comparison between this and the name of a road. One is a lot more important than the other.
I agree with that.
Okay? So, I support Cyra, I support this resolution. And I make a motion that we adopt the, changing the-
Amending the resolution.
The resolution to see this.
I second it.
Motion made by-
Well, hold on, before we, before we move on, I have something to say. I know we got a motion on the table, but you gotta hear me out, you gotta know how I feel. I'm not just sitting up here-
I take my second back.
Okay. And he can take his motion back, but let me say what I have to say first. And I am one of those organizations as well who work diligently in a community and Cyra has donated to multiple organizations. And my, my thought process or my vote tonight is not gonna be based on that, it's gonna be based on what I feel like the city needs. And I have grown up my whole life here in Vidalia as well. I love Vidalia. I would rather be nowhere else but Vidalia. But I work in Mississippi. I have to drive to Natchez every day, every morning going to work. If I could have a job here in Vidalia, I would prefer having a job here in Vidalia. But my ultimate job resides at 228B John O'Drunkin Drive. That's in Natchez. I mean, in reference to the college, yes, 50 years ago, I can imagine-
It's tough.
The rule was, hold on, 50 years ago, the rule was-
I know, I got it.
But in this century now, times have changed and that college rule is if you live here in Vidalia, it's a waiver they have now.
That's good.
So, things is waived for different circumstances and different situations, and I think this has been a preservative of a different circumstances situation. I would love for every employee that worked at Cyra to be a resident of Louisiana, but let's just be realistic, it's not gonna happen because we don't, we don't have who's qualified to meet that standard. I mean, we could look wherever we wanted to look, but evidently, as long as Cyra has been an equal opportunity and has looked for people as far as diversity, I'm all in favor of whatever it takes to get us moving forward so this company can be productive and we can get these people employed.
The state of Louisiana is also an equal opportunity employer. The state of Louisiana is also an equal opportunity employer, but when I decided to run for this position, when the mayor decided to run for his position, we had requirements of where we could and could not live. That can be implemented by Cyra if they so choose to do that. That does not make them an equal, not an equal opportunity employer. It says they're willing to support our town and our state just as much as we are willing to support them. That's a decision that they can make, the decision stands with them. This board has the opportunity, like Alderman Gardner says, he wishes he worked in Vidalia. He can create that opportunity for 10 additional residents of this area. He can create that opportunity that you can live here and work here. We have the opportunity to do that now. Cyra only has to make that a requirement. It does not remove the equal opportunity employment logo or requirements. As I said, when I decided to run for this job, there were requirements on where I could live. I knew it going in, I knew it when I accepted the position, and when I decided to move from one house to the other, I made sure I was still within the bounds of where I was allowed to live. That does not mean the state of Louisiana is not an equal opportunity employer.
Motion was made by-
I apologize for overstepping, but I do-
Motion was made by Alderman Betts, who I hear is second.
I second it.
Seconded by Alderman McCoy. All right, Stu, roll call. Clerk?
Motion before the board is to adopt a resolution, amending a resolution of the town of Vidalia approving Cyra Technologies LLC for participation in the industrial tax exemption program at 2001 D A Big Lane Road, Vidalia, Louisiana. Alderman Betts?
Yes.
Alderman Betts votes yea. Alderman Doree?
No.
Alderman Doree votes nay. Alderman Gardner?
Yes.
Alderman Gardner, yea. Alderman McCoy?
Yes.
Alderman McCoy, yea. Alderman Probst?
No.
Alderman Probst, nay. Mayor, let the record show, the yays are three, the nays are two, the motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. People, they want you to call them and you just can't call them, these people, because I got a dog in my backyard and I lock it up, you know, or so forth. It's just hard when you got, you know, 2,400, you know, actual individual customers to accommodate those when they're doing the reads. So, what we want to do is just discuss what would be a fair, so to speak, penalty for not allowing access to these, to these accounts that won't, you know, just don't give us access to their backyard or read or meet. Bill, go ahead, you had, come here.
Yeah, I took up management, which is part of the board. Our, we have an ordinance that says that we are supposed to be provided access to the town's utility equipment and that if we don't have access to the town's utility equipment, we can't abate whatever is in our way. We pull a tent up or knock something fall down or whatever we need to get to our equipment. It does not have anything in there for a fee or not being able to access the meters, which is kind of silly. We don't wanna go out in pairs or non-stands, we don't wanna go out and break down and move the storage building, we don't wanna do any of that. But we have a number of repeated offenders that, for lack of a better word, who lock their gates, who have dogs in their backyard, who can access them. And we, they know, we've sent out letters to tell them, if your account number starts with a 1, you're gonna be red during these five days. If it's a 2, it says 4, and help them. Doesn't have any key. What I'd like to say is, rather than what we're doing now, is we estimate what a reading might be, and we usually estimate a little high to be sure we're comfortable with the town would be collecting, and then we adjust it and shoot it out when we, when we know, when we do get a read. And that's awkward and it's not proper. So, I'm thinking if we could do something like a $30 add on the bill when they don't provide access, not the first time, we can tell them, a note on there that the next time there'll be a fee from then on. And, you know, we'd even have people say, just call us the day you're coming. Well, we can't do that with a company number of people. We're not sure if it could be this day or the next day, I don't know when they get ready to do it. So, that's what we're asking for. There is an ordinance already there that said we should be provided, or we must be provided, access to utility equipment, but there's nothing for any kind of fee or non-access. It's just a label of the problem, which is not really what we want to try to do.
Does, does the current ordinance, does it reference any, like, would it have to be amended, the current ordinance, to reflect?
It has to be amended for, for a non-access to utility meters.
Yeah.
And we'd wanna use judgment on that, again, give them a warning.
We're not, we're not gonna hard line them, but people who are dysfunctional, allow them to be given.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Cassandra, do you have a question?
I do. I was cutting my grass. Now, I got to my grass meter, and I got no. Well, because my wheel went down with the little hole with the meter. So, when I got the lawnmower, I was the hole, it was a bad reason, it was a bad decision. Anyway, I sat and used stuff to cover. And left me enough to cover was the cutest little honeycomb. If it was a honeycomb, it was small, duck a bee. And if it was mud, I'm gonna need firewood.
They have a scope, you know, a lot of people get that, especially with the high water and all.
I don't have no water.
But what I'm saying, if it's even mud, they have a scope that they can, they'll reach down and they can see that the meter-
I don't have a seat before. It was no reason for me to have mud, because I cleaned it off. Go look at it now.
The mayor's former now, they couldn't be reading, they couldn't be reading your barrier, they wouldn't show you, they can't.
But they need to come show me.
Yeah. I thought, hey, I was with you, I'm with you, I was there and they showed me how they did, I'm going like, okay, I got you. Because-
Like Missouri, show me.
Okay, all right. We'll do that. I'll get with one of the meter readers, I'll go around there with them, we'll call you.
You said you were thinking like $25, is that what you said?
I was like $75 something, that would get their attention.
Are you doing like first, second, third offense that we have to keep up with, or just if I can't come?
Well, I mean, we're not, all we're gonna do is, we know, you know where they are.
Gotcha.
And we'll, we'll say this is a pass.
Yeah.
One more time, that's it.
Right. Legally though, can we tack it on to the bill as an assessment, or does it have to be a city ticket?
Probably not, yes.
It will be.
It'll have to be, like, they have to, so that would mean that then we would have to notify either the town marshal or the police department to go and issue this person a ticket? Is that how it's gonna work?
They go, they definitely have to, they're gonna apply.
I mean, I think it's a great idea and I think we should because there's a lot of lost time here, but we've gotta iron out exactly how it's gonna be done, how are we gonna collect it, who are they gonna pay it to?
It would have to be a citation.
Yeah.
I think, and then it'd be, go, it'd go to the city court just like anything else. So, yes, we would, it'd be a citation, that had to be offered. And we'd have to direct, you know, actually probably get, and we would, it'd be procedure with us and the police department, hey, look, we're going to this, we don't have access to it, we need you to leave a citation or something like that. So, we'll work that out.
They'll work that out.
I think it's a great idea.
And we'll get with counsel to draw up the wording on the change and make sure we're in compliance with any kind of other laws that we can do these things. But I'm like you, Bill, they don't wanna tear their fence down to it.
I get that. Would that be something that the city marshal would do?
Right now, he works for city court, I mean, with city court, you know, as far as serving warrants and things of that nature. No, right now, code enforcement is strictly police department right now. Code enforcement is strictly police department.
So, what is the purpose of our city marshal?
He works for city court. And he serves warrants on, on tickets and things that, that they have, and it's a long list, I'll have to get it and I'll be glad to give it to you. But it's, he works at the pleasure of the court. Okay?
Oh, and by the way, just in answering Tommy's remarks about people moving here for the, for the school here, they just get addresses. They're our people's address.
Okay. All right. Let's move, all right.
We'll, we'll come back to the council with something on that and get with- Okay. Number eight, update on the town's risk management program pertaining to general liability, workman's compensation, insurance. You know, we've been in office, and we're in our three, third year, and I just wanted to just give everybody an update of where we are, who we have insurance with and things that we've worked to, to save the town money and work on our insurance program. For example, on our workman's comp, I think the, the year that we actually got in office, June 30th, 2016, workman's comp premiums were paid in a total of $517,000. The next year, they were $346, and the next year was $349, and this last year, our total premiums, we got them down to $336,000. And that, and we also are getting a rebate of $22,300 from the company that we moved to. And so, that's, that's a pretty good savings right there, almost $150,000 a year that we've worked real hard to do. I'd like to thank Jay and Debra and Bill working real hard with these insurance companies because they spent a lot of time with these companies going over and pouring through ways we could save money. And also, on our health insurance cost, we, we worked real hard, again, when we came in office, the premiums were a million three, and I'm proud to say this past year, they only totaled $865,000. So, we've worked real hard to save the town money. When you see we're some of these places, we've been able to save and work real hard, we've done that. Just recently, we signed over our, our liability insurance to Reed Insurance as our agent. Travers is our, our primary carrier. And we're gonna be doing some things that's gonna really protect the town. Bo and him got Travers, come in, we sat down with staff. They have some great programs that they can institute and do training for all of our employees. For example, they have a, a training system where they come in, they train our police and our fire departments, everything they need to do as far as a municipality. And what that does is alleviates the town of any liability. If an employee gets out there and does something, a police officer or a fire department personnel or somebody in sanitation does something that they're not supposed to do, the town has released a liability because they were trained not to do so. And so, that would kind of relieve the town a liability of that, that employee doing what they're not supposed to do. And Bo and them, they're, they will come in for $6 per employee, they will do, take them through this, I think it's six areas of training, whether it's sexual harassment, ethics, all these different things, safety, and things of that nature that they'll go through for $6 per employee. That's pretty cheap, because anytime you'd have an outside company come in, they would charge $100, $100 plus to, to train these people and get this training on these individual employees. So, that's something we're looking at doing. Bo, is there anything you'd like to say as far as, Bo and Brian have done a good job of sitting down with us?
I'd say that as a looking forward to working with the town and invited to have the opportunity to serve the town. You know, we live here, we work here, and we have to help keep this off down with the town. And Brian was here with me also, he's working with us as well, he had to go with you.
And I have to say that I've been trying to work with this, if you can attest to this, Bo, for about two and a half years, I've been trying to get this moved to Vidalia, Louisiana, and I was ignored, just so we'll know. I'm just gonna say what I said because I feel like it needs to be said, but it's happened. Thank you, Bo. I appreciate you for being a local business, getting this insurance.
Thank you, Tommy, I appreciate that.
I just wanted to let you know.
All right, thank you.
Certain things-
I'll leave that alone because-
I would.
Number nine.
Okay. Anybody like to discuss that later, I'll tell you the real truth.
Oh, you telling me I'm a liar? Is that what you say?
I didn't say that.
I think you just said that, Bo.
I didn't say that.
I wouldn't say that.
You said you've tried for two and a half years to do this and you haven't, okay?
Oh, you say I'm a liar?
I didn't say that. Saying you didn't try two and a half years.
I mentioned it to you way back.
You mentioned in a meeting this past year that-
And before that. So, we're not gonna argue because we had that happen before in here with Debra and you, okay? And things happen differently.
Tom.
Yeah, you need to do that.
Okay. All right, I would like to, right now-
And Martha?
I would, I would like to-
Hey, Mr. Wade.
I would like to, this is a very, very special moment for, I think, the whole town to, I want to introduce somebody to you that's been around here for, since June 1st, he's been here 45 years. One of the people that, when I got in office, anywhere I went to the state, nobody knew me from anybody, but when they said, where are you from? I'd say Vidalia, Louisiana. They go, they named this guy's name. They said, man, y'all have got the best guy that, that everybody knows this guy in the state when it deals with utilities. And he is our department head for all of our enterprise funds, our electricity, our gas, our sewer, our water. I'm talking about Mark Moros. He's been here 45 years. And he is someone, I mean, he's just a, he's just somebody that's just solid as a rock, and we've been very blessed as a, as a town to have him, uh, everybody around the state feels that way, again, I get accolades everywhere I go, and it's based on his work and his knowledge. Anytime I get something that, that comes in from a lab or comes in from the gov state and saying, hey, here's your results, I call Mark, I say, Mark, what does this mean, he'll look at it and say, that means we're good, you know, so he knows all this stuff, and he is, he really, I don't worry about any of these things because he's on top of it, and I just wanna recognize him, all the, all of his employees that work for him, respect him, he's well thought of, Mark, can you come forward, just a minute, can you come forward just a second?
All the employees, the employees that work with you got together and, and take this plaque, and says, presented Mark Moros with appreciation of your many years of dedicated service, devotion, and commitment to our community during 2008. Thank you, thank you about retiring and trying to talk him out of it, and, uh, maybe we talk him out of it, but anyway, you've been, you've been a pleasure, and in the national, we hope we don't lose him, but anyway, we don't have to, we have to beg.
Okay, number nine is, uh, an update on Major League Fishing event and preview of the upcoming national broadcast commercial featuring the town of Vidalia. Major League Fishing is one of the major, uh, outdoor programs in the country, and we've been blessed to have them, this was our second go-around here with us, and this time the state of Louisiana was able to capture them. Uh, when they called me up back in December, Major League Fishing, they had several other people inter, you know, courting them to come to their area, and they called up and said, Buzz, would you like another shot at us, and they told me how much it costs, and I said, ooh, you know, and I said, give me two or three days, and Bill and I met with, uh, uh, one of the representatives of Major League Fishing, we set up a meeting with, with Billy Nun Gaster, our lieutenant governor, we went down there and told him, hey, this is what we need, and showed it to him, and presented it to him, and, and we said, how much can you do, governor, lieutenant governor, he said, we're gonna do all of it. I said, so, here we go, we, uh, we have this, and it's their world championship that they fished here in February, they stayed in comfort suites, uh, these things are really, uh, highly confidential, because nobody knows who even competed in them, who won them or anything until it plays out, so, on June the twenty-seventh, twenty-first or twenty-second, twenty-second, June twenty-second?
Saturday.
Saturday at one o'clock for the next six weeks following that, at one o'clock on CBS, they will air those, and we, Vidalia will have a commercial in there that they gave us free, uh, to air, so, and I'm gonna play that, that's how we're, we're gonna adjourn with tonight, uh, yeah, Bill, go ahead.
It would've cost ten thousand dollars, CBS, and Major League Fishing, but yeah.
They even paid for the cost of the, to fix the ramp? The city workers went out and fixed the ramp, huh?
What ramp?
The boat ramp, the boat launch?
They, they launched at the lakes, all the lakes that they fish.
No, we didn't, no.
Oh.
Anyway, but what I'm, this is, and this is gonna be played all over the country, and then also, it'll be played later on the other channels later, they'll pick it up and do reruns of it, of that championship, and it'll be played on Pursuit Channel, World Fishing Network, Outdoor Channel, and those, this scene over and over again, I see the Vidalia one from the, two years ago all the time, so, uh, Josh, would you hit that?
Vidalia, Louisiana is a place where endless possibilities exist for residents, visitors, and businesses, whether it's the abundant recreation opportunities, rich culture, or unyielding optimism, we're excited for our future. Industries are constantly discovering the countless benefits of the area's vast resources and the advantages Vidalia provides for those seeking to thrive in today's changing economic environment. Vidalia, a vibrant town with endless possibilities.
Very good.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, are we adjourned or are you second? Second by Alderman Doree, all in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.